Ladies and gentlemen, it is our honour and privilege to introduce to you Mr. Ramiro A. Cabasos, President and CEO of York City of Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, America's first Hispanic Business Organization founded in 1929. Can you all hear me? Good evening, welcome. We have a very great program. This is your show tonight. We have our mayor and our 10 council members who we're recognizing tonight. We're very excited. We have 700 people joining us tonight. Give yourself a round of applause. If we can have your attention just greatly, I know you're excited. Minx low, keep it down. Where's Louis Vining? Louis, I owe you a call. If we can have your... We have a few like officials I'd like to recognize. If you could hold your applause, Mayor Ron Nerber, Councilman De Vino, Councilman Shaw, Councilman Villagrand, Councilman Zaldania, Councilwoman Gonzalez, new Councilman Brockhouse, Councilwoman Sandoval, Councilman Belais, Councilman Courage, Councilman O'Carry, our Chairman Esteban Lopez, our chair like Erica Prosper, Rabul Omelee, AJ Rodriguez, and Marque Rodriguez with the US Hispanic Chamber. We have with us our Secretary of State Rolando Pablo with the state of Texas, Illinois. We have Senator Jose Benedez, Justice Martinez with us, Justice Alvarez, Commissioner Kevin Wolf, Commissioner Tommy Calvert, Tax Minister Albert Udesti, Trustee Iman Katz, Trustee Joel Benet, and Trustee Sandy Wood. Let's give them a round of applause. We have well great partners. We have the Asian Chamber, the Alamo City Black, the Asociación de Empresarios Mexicanos, Centro Downtown San Antonio, the Maestro Entrepreneur Center, ourselves, the Hispanic Chamber, the San Antonio LGBTQ Chamber, the San Antonio Mobility Coalition, the San Antonio Women's Chamber, the South Chamber, Tech Block, and the World Affairs Council. This is truly a statewide welcome reception for our new mayor and our new council. We're gonna have each of the partners introduce themselves and then also introduce the councilperson and the mayor that is up here. So without further ado, I wanted to thank everyone that made tonight possible. If we could have your attention please. We want to thank The Pearl for hosting us tonight, The Rose Boutique, Henry's Catering, Clear Visions, Delmi Productions, and DJ Rico. You know, you can't have an event with Tech Block unless there's a DJ. So we have a DJ in the house. Thank you DJ Rico. With that, let me turn this over to my good friend Pat DiGiovanni, GM our partner agencies who do great work for our community. We'll take about a minute.
Thank you Romero. You have been known to quiet a room. Good afternoon everyone. My name is Pat DiGiovanni and I'm President and CEO of Centro San Antonio. With me somewhere in this crowd is Trish DeBerry, the Central Alliance Chair. There you are Trish. Thank you. And on behalf of our Board of Directors, we want to congratulate all of the returning and new council members on a job well done. And we look forward to working with each and every one of you at Centro. We know how difficult elected office can be and we just wish you all the very best. We know that we're gonna do our very best to work with you and make your jobs easier as you go along. As a sole nonprofit organization focused on downtown, we greatly enjoyed our working experience with District 1 Councilman Roberto Trevino who was part of the last council that successfully got the bond program passed. And Councilman, we want to thank you for just a job well done and helping downtown continue to thrive into the future. And so, Councilman, we look forward to working with you in the next two years. We're really grateful for your service and I think we ought to give it up for Councilman Roberto Trevino.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Omwol, Chairman of the Board at the Alamo City Black Chamber of Commerce. And we have a number of our members here too and guests. If you all want to just wave your hands so people know who you are, that would be awesome. I have the privilege of introducing a new councilperson who graduated from right here in San Antonio, University of Texas in San Antonio, attended the Third Good Marshall Law School at Texas Southern University, served in the military, which is so apropos because this is Military City USA, the Navy Reserve. And now he has his own law practice right in the heart of the home of the most historic court with over 800 historic buildings, Port San Houston. There we go. The largest Catholic university in the state of Texas, University of incarnate Word. Home of the only Hispanic-serving institute and historically black college university, St. Phillips. Home of Spurs Sports and Entertainment and the San Antonio Stock and Rodeo Show. That would be the AT&amp;T Center and Freeman Coliseum. Home of the historic St. Paul Square and Alice Alley right where our chamber is located. I bring to you new District 2 Councilman William Cruz Shaw. Let's give him a round of applause.
Sorry everyone saying good evening, so I'll start with cheers everyone. Should have a glass. My name is Alarion Le Junior. I have the pleasure of serving as the President and CEO for the South San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. My Chairman is here with me today, Mr. Joe Pan from Frost Bank. Joe, yeah, we're gonna give it a... And my chair o'leg, Ms. Erica Gonzalez from Gonzalez Medical, Fox TV, you name it, she's always busy. My chair o'leg is here with us as well. On behalf of our members, I have the pleasure of giving our regards on behalf of Councilwoman Villa Grant who can't join us today, she's out of the country. But then I can tell you, we're honored and... I can't even speak highly enough of our councilwoman. Now, I think probably the most senior member on council. She's a fighter, she's resilient, she makes sure we get our fair share. We're very excited about the opportunities associated with the bond and the investments that are going in. Again, that she made sure we got our fair share. Everyone got to say we're a home of, but we're really proud of all the economic development happening with Brook City Base, with Toyota, with Port San Antonio, and everything, Texas A&amp;M, San Antonio. You name it, the South side's alive and we're proving our side matters and we're gonna try together. So thank you Roberto Trevino.
Thank you. Buenas tardes a todos. Good afternoon everyone. My name is Ruben Dinder. I am the Chair and President for the AEM San Antonio, Asociación de Empresarios Mexicanos, which means Mexican Entrepreneur Association. We're very excited to share with you this event today with our leadership in San Antonio. It's my pleasure and my honor to introduce you Mr. Ray Zaldania, Councilman for District 4. Mr. Zaldania. How are you? You okay? Okay? It's on its way.
Hi there both mayor, councilmembers. I'm Elizabeth Eguia Garcia, I'm the new Executive Director for the Maestro Entrepreneur Center in partnership with the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I am also serving dual capacity as the Vice President of Small Business and so I have the opportunity to actually introduce Ramiro and say thank you to Ramiro for his generosity to be a partner with the Maestro Entrepreneur Center, which is an incubation located in the District 5. And we also are in the hub zone, it's a designated hub zone. And so, in other words, you know, we're serving entrepreneurs who want to get to the next level but are struggling and so they need to be in a supportive nurturing environment like the one that we provide. And I also want to introduce our Chair of the Board, our President of the Board, Julissa, who is actually the Visionary Carriero, who's the Visionary in my honor. She is a great ally to our public servants when it comes to entrepreneurship in our city and to really help us take our city to the next level. And again, I am very privileged to introduce our Councilwoman who's also a longtime friend of mine. She's... She played a very critical role at the beginning of the Maestro Entrepreneur Center, which is only a year and two months old. And so, if you please welcome Councilwoman Shirley Gonzalez.
Hello. How's the energy over there? Fantastic. Very good. Good. My name is David Suli, I'm the President of the LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce. I... We are... We are truly, truly excited to be part of this. Remember San Antonio is a very inclusive city and diverse. It is important that we... That we really fight for that, you know, that it's a friendly city, that we're accepting. And again, it's a true pleasure for us to be a part of this. Thank you so much for this opportunity. It is my honor to present now, new to the council, Greg Brockham.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Becker, Chair of the San Antonio Women's Chamber of Commerce celebrating our 30th anniversary next year. We pride ourselves on being the education chamber with core signature programs, the Smart Women's Series, the Power Hour luncheons, our Transformational Leadership Development Program, and the Bloomberg Business Program in workership within incarnate Word. Fundraising events include the sold-out yearly grand golf tournament and our Constellation of Stars Gala, which is hosted by our new foundation, our new 501(c)(3) entity, the San Antonio Women's Chamber of Commerce Foundation. This year's gala will be on Veterans Day, November 11th, and not only are we honoring San Antonio women leaders, the Spirit of Courage Award will be presented to a wounded woman warrior by General Heather Pringle, Commandant of Joint Base San Antonio. We hope to see all of the active military and retired veterans at our gala. It is now my honor to introduce fellow engineer, Councilwoman from District 7, Anna Sandoval.
How's everybody doing? What a turnout. Great job to all the members that helped put this event together. It is my pleasure to introduce Councilman Manuel Belais from District 8. My name is Inigo Rosak. I'm the Chairman of the Board of the World Affairs Council of San Antonio. I'm very excited because our mission is to take San Antonio to the world and bring the world to San Antonio. And Manny Belais has been doing that for many years. He was working at Brook City Base and now being at the... We have companies like Bolero and NewSCAR, universities like the University of Texas at San Antonio. I know that that mission to take San Antonio to the world is going to continue. So I'm thrilled to have my friend and a great public servant, Manny Belais, serve in District 8. So please welcome.
I'm Vic Boyer. I'm President of the San Antonio Mobility Coalition, which is a joint organization that focuses on transportation funding, be it for highways, transit, freight rail, streets, sidewalks, things like that. I want to point out our chair o'leg, Ray Lopez, who is here. And also, let's thank him for his angerous service at City Council and also the services MPO for. Thank you Ray. It is my honor and distinct privilege to introduce to you District 9's the Councilman John Courage, a man I have not met yet. I understand from his bio, he is a former Air Force veteran, a teacher, and a former trustee of the Alamo Community College Board of Trustees. So my pleasure to introduce Councilman John Courage.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Elfa Adams, a past chair and also a current board member and government relations committee chair. And I represent Alamo Asian American Chamber of Commerce. And we're a boutique chamber here and we started as... Since 2006. Not many people knows about this, but we are here. So we have a lot of information given out. So welcome to ask the San Antonio members here. So first I want to introduce you our newly-elected President of the Chamber, who is Sarica Corre right here. And we also have three board members and past presidents who are currently here. And I want to introduce Kivisa Chan, also our past City Councilwoman, Julia Lisa, who is here, please wave your hands. And also Melina Rodriguez, Andrew with Overland Partners, who are here. So it's with my great pleasure to introduce you the newly-elected District 10 City Councilman, Mr. Clayton Perry.
Good evening. My name's Cory Maluna and I'm the Managing Partner of Vanbury's Catering. We're proud to be your visionary sponsor tonight. We've provided your nourishment tonight and the cocktails and I hope you're enjoying them. If you're interested, consider us for some of your business. Service happens in this room by the way. It's now my honor to recognize all the other sponsors of this evening's reception. Please say your applause. So special thanks to tonight's collaborator sponsor, the Alamo Colleges District, Toyota Motor Manufacturing Texas Inc., and Pearl Group. Special thanks to tonight's advocate sponsors, Briggs Medical Office Parking, CPS Energy, Laurel Ridge Treatment Center, Lime Barger, Dog, Rogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP, Nationwide Insurance, New Star Energy, Port San Antonio, The Rose Boutique, San Antonio River Authority, San Antonio Women's Chamber of Commerce, The Smothers Foundation, Stellar Partners Inc., USAA, Bolero, Zachary Corporation, and Zachary Group. A special thanks to tonight's signage and printing sponsor, Clear Visions, and RR Donley Company. And next up, I believe, is David Hurt with Tech Block, Tech Block CEO.
Hello San Antonio. So just briefly before the main event, you know, tonight's event is the vision of a man who for the 20-plus years that I've known and worked with him has always been about collaboration with others instead of competing against them. And I think it's... It would only be appropriate that we recognize again and thank the creator of tonight's collaborative event, the President of the Hispanic Chamber, Mr. Ramiro Cabasos. My name is David Hurt and I run a cybersecurity software company here in San Antonio and I sometimes moonlight as the CEO of Tech Block. And we're grassroots movement created to activate San Antonio's tech industry. And the man I'm here to introduce to you tonight actually needs no introduction. Many of us have known Ron and worked with him for years. And in fact, I'll never forget, it was just almost two years ago to this day, a stone's throw from this building at The Pearl, that about a thousand tech workers came together for our first rally to launch Tech Block because we were concerned about the direction of the city. And we didn't formally invite elected officials, but then Councilman Ron Nerber was there. And he wasn't there for the spotlight. He was quietly listening to our concerns and connecting with members of our industry and our leadership. And that is how so many of us have come to know and respect Ron. He is a friendly person, approachable, a thoughtful leader with a clear vision for our city. But he's also a man of great courage. I mean, let's be honest, he ran for mayor when early on, not many thought it could be done. And he is a tireless worker for our community. I don't think we've had a mayor in recent memory or maybe in history that has walked more miles of neighborhood streets or knocked on more doors to listen to and talk to the people that he now represents. So ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome our newly-elected mayor of San Antonio, Mayor Ron Nerber.
Good evening. Are you all excited, as excited to be here as I am? There is a real sense in our city right now that things are happening. Things are moving. It's only been a couple of weeks now that we've had this election and this council has only been together to vote one time, but we're already making things happen here. And I want to thank all of the sponsors of tonight's event. I want to thank the Hispanic Chamber, the Alamo State, the Alamo Asian Chamber, all the Chamber groups that have come together, the LGBTQ Chamber, so many organizations that are involved in tonight to really celebrate a new page being turned in San Antonio, a new leadership here on City Council and a new mayor for San Antonio. I'm here to tell you we're ready to build the city you deserve. And I want to thank also the Chairman of the Chamber, Esteban Lopez, a friend of ours. Along with Ramiro Cabasos, who we all know is a tireless worker for the business community and particularly for the small business community in San Antonio. And I can't wait at some point in the next year or so to introduce the next Chairwoman of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, your First Lady, Erica Prosper. And I want to bore you with a big stump speech in particular because there's nobody that does it better than Tommy Calvert. I'm looking right at him. I appreciate the work of Tommy and the Commissioners Court. We have such a great partnership between the City Council and the Commissioners Court on things like transportation. And I want to give a big shout out to our District 4 Councilman, Ray Zaldania, who became the Vice Chair of the MPO yesterday. We got a lot of heavy lifting in transportation. And there's gonna be a lot of work to do along with our former Councilman Ray Lopez, who is here, who's gonna be chairing Stamp Co. But one thing we've got to do in this community is get our traffic moving, get our transportation system moving, and finally build a modern transportation system for the city of San Antonio. That's a big priority. But really what the priority is, is it doesn't matter what you do here in San Antonio, it doesn't matter what quarter of the city you live in, you have a city council that's gonna be working doggedly hard for you. And we've got to get to work tomorrow building a city budget that speaks to those priorities. Where everyone in San Antonio matters, they're being listened to. Our small business community will have a platform to thrive. Our entrepreneurs in San Antonio will have a voice at City Council and these are the folks that are gonna do it. So give them a round of applause because there's a lot of work to be done. And I want to leave you with... With Joe Pan, we're gonna have a lot of fun. We're gonna have a lot of fun tonight. We're gonna have a lot of fun for many years here in San Antonio because of the work we're all gonna do together. But we need your help. The fight has come to San Antonio, Texas. I was speaking with our Speaker of the House, Joe Strauss, today. We know what's gonna happen starting in July with a new special session. And there's a lot of legislation being proposed that is gonna be damaging to our community. And we need the business community of San Antonio to stand up and help protect San Antonio. We need your help in showing that there's devastating negative economic impact on bad legislation like SB 4, like SB 6, and all the other things that seek to divide our community. And we need the business community to help us tell that story. So please, stand up, use your platform, use the authority that you have and your pens and all of the employees that you put to work here in San Antonio and help us to tell that story. Because nobody does San Antonio better than San Antonio citizens and we need to say that up in Austin. So will you join us? We can't wait to get started. It starts tomorrow again. A brand-new budget, a brand-new year, and we're here to make San Antonio the city you deserve. San Antonio works for every single person, every single business. Thank you so much, San Antonio. Mayor Nerber, we're ready to work with you. And councilmembers, count everyone here on your team to make things happen. I want to thank our partners who are up here. We believe in equality and diversity. I want to thank our sponsors that made tonight happen. Each of you for being here tonight to show community-wide support. I would like to conclude with a little special surprise. Our Chairman of the Board, Dr. Esteban Lopez, has a special pin he'd like to give each of our councilmembers and our mayor. And again, in conclusion, thank you to Lingoy Cabasos for the great job that he did to pull all of us together tonight. Thank you very much. Councilman Lopez.
Good evening everyone. My name's Esteban Lopez. I'm the Chairman of the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to everyone for being here today. This is a true example of the power of partnership. And as I was walking here today, I ran into Coyote, who couldn't make it here today, and asked me on behalf of the San Antonio Spurs, big round of applause for the San Antonio Spurs. As a token to the new mayor and City Council, they asked me to give them, on behalf of the Spurs organization, official San Antonio Spurs keychains so that you can always keep the Spurs with you as you travel the city and the United States. Thank you everyone for being here today. And on behalf of the San Antonio Spurs, I'd like to give each and every councilmember and the mayor their official San Antonio Spurs keychain. Thank you. Thank you.
I was thinking about that.